Okay, I call this meeting to order. Please stay seated for the invocation given by Councilmember Byakowski, and then we'll stand afterwards for the pledge allegiance. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. President. We lost, recently lost, a great citizen, a good neighbor, a friend to many people in the community, Mr. Bob Knight.
And... Heidi, I think you knew Bob pretty well.
Bob died peacefully at his home a few weeks ago. And he was a father, grandfather, uncle, friend, and neighbor. And he had an incredible sense of humor, cracking a joke when he least expected it. And he was neighbors to Councilmember McGinnis, legislator Mahow, Sheriff Sharon, city clerk Heidi. Bob was just a great guy. And he was a musician. Everybody, if you've ever seen the Batavia Band, you knew him. He was up there, always pushing for it, always trying to find a spot for him to play. And he worked very hard at it. Throughout his life, he was an active community volunteer. And he always had a slogan, "I have to get back to the community." And this is what we need in Batavia, neighbors like this and friends like this. He played in the Symphony Orchestra, the Concert Band, Gohard. He was a Rotarian, member of First Presbyterian Church, volunteered at the library, the wind ensemble, the Office of the Aging. And when he retired, something that's near to some of our hearts, he volunteered at the VA. He would drive for the VA, pick people up, run them to medical appointments and all that. It's a time-consuming job, and volunteers are always appreciated there. So then he started volunteering. I don't know if you ran into him, Gino, but he was volunteering at the testing clinic, COVID-19. He was a Rotarian for 30 years. He was involved in musical theater. And as a Rotarian, he usually worked backstage or in the orchestra pit. And during his year as president, he installed bike racks and kiosks in the Elica Trail in Batavia. He was a really true member of our community, a great asset. He'll be truly missed. I know my mailman stopped me one day. He says, "What happened to Bob Knight?" And I says, "Nothing, I don't know why." And he says, "Usually, he's sitting on the porch waiting for me, and I haven't seen him in two weeks." And he says, "I think something happened." And then I found out he passed away. So in his memory, I'm going to just read this little poem. It's titled "Heavy Hearts." "With heavy hearts and tear-filled eyes, family and friends bid you goodbye. Gathered this day, united sorrow, yet sure in faith of a brighter tomorrow. Although you've gone, we feel you near. You are so loved by everyone here. You touched our lives in numerous ways and brightened many of our days. Sharing memories of time with you is something we love to do. We laugh, we cry with joy and pain. Goodbye for now, until we meet again."
If everyone would rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City Church lease agreement?
Thank you, Council President. In your special conference meeting packet, you have a memo and resolution and an amendment to the building space lease, adding the YMCA to the lease with the City of Batavia at the City Church Building, where we run our youth services program. You also have the original lease that was approved on August 1, 2019. So we're asking that you move this to the business meeting this evening. If you do decide to move forward with the glow YMCA, contact us.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Counselor, are both parties now happy with this lease? I mean, there's...
Yeah, the City Church has asked the YMCA to add it.
Thank you. Good.
Any other questions? So we consent to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Your boa contract?
Yep, the second item on the special conference meeting tonight is the New York State Department of State Brownfield Opportunity Area Pre-Development Grant. This is a brand-new grant program. We're one of the first communities to have received this. The award was issued in December 2019, and we're finally getting the contract for council to approve and move forward with. The total project cost is for $215,000, of which $193,500 is grant funds, and the remainder is in-kind staff, time, and support to the project. The pre-development grant will advance opportunities at City Center and the Harvester Campus. And it's all pre-development activities, such as studies, engineering, and specifically on the Harvester Campus, looking at subdivision plans, legal analysis, and real estate strategy to try to move that campus towards redevelopment. So I'm asking if you'll move this this evening to put onto the business meeting and approve.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, we consent to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote. Ms. Pacino, would you put us into executive session, please?
Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1F of the Public Officers' Law permits a legislative body of municipal authority to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or claim a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the City Council is hereby entered into executive session.
Second in line, Mr. Beely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Perez?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
And the special conference meeting? Ms. Briggs, second in line, Mr. Byakowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay, we now open the regular business meeting. You've all received the copy of the January 2021 financials. Are there any questions or concerns? So we're in consensus to approve those financials? You've also received a copy of the February 2021 minutes. Are there any concerns, omissions, additions, misspellings, anything you noticed? So we're in consensus to approve the February 2021 minutes? Okay, those are approved. We have numerous agenda items today, so feel free to raise your hand, so we can get through them. Number 10, 2021, the 2122 budget ordinance. Mr. Beely? 11, 2021, the water meter rates. Briggs? 12, 2021, the Business Improvement District Plan. Mr. Byakowski? 13, 2021, the Youth Services Agreement with YMCA. Mr. McGinnis? 14, 2021, the Strategic Plan for Fiscal Year, 2122. Mr. Beely? 15, 2021, the capital projects for capital project budgets. Mr. McGinnis? 16, 2021, investment policy. 17, 2021, the purchasing manual. 18, 2021, the parking lot transfer of reserve funds. Mr. or Mrs. Briggs? 19, 2021, employee benefit liability reserve. Mr. McGinnis? 2021, 20, 20, 21.
There you go.
I was like, there's too many 20s in there. Resolution to appoint various committees and boards. Ms. Pacino? 21, 2021, the closeout of capital projects. Mr. McGinnis? 22, 2021, Youth Bureau Termination Agreement with the Genesee County. Mr. Perez? 23, 2021, the ice rink lease agreement. Mr. Beely? 24, 2021, the purchase contract for chemicals. Mr. Byakowski? 25, 2021, the lead service lines agreement. Mr. Perez? The 26, 2021, police reform. Ms. Briggs? 27, 2021, the agreement space lease between City Church and City of Batavia. The lease agreement? Mr. Byakowski? 28, 2021, the Oa grant that we just moved. Mr. Byakowski? And 29, 2021. Ms. Pacino?
I believe that's it, if I missed anything.
There you go.
There was too many 21s.
Yeah, closer than any of them.
Okay, communications.
The glow YMCA is putting their application for the corporate cuff. It'll be on Thursday, August 5, in Centennial Park at 6:00 p.m. They are aware that all of this is based on COVID restrictions at the time. They also are aware of their need to pay for any overtime costs incurred by the city, which typically leave probably the first $500. We do not do that. We're not doing that, at least for the foreseeable future. They were made aware of that and still wish to proceed with this application.
All right, any questions on that? Okay, the Living Waters?
Living Waters have submitted their application for community outreach. They had submitted this last year, so they're just moving the same one forward, but with a different date, on Sunday, July 18, in Austin Park. It would be from 10:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They are aware of the need for carry-in, carry-out, and again, if COVID allows for such events.
Any questions or concerns on that? The next City Council Conference Meeting will be held Monday, March 22, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. City Attorney?
Yes. We continue to work on a variety of matters across the spectrum, but there is nothing specific to report on this time.
Any questions for the City Attorney? City Managers report?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to update everyone that the police station feasibility study continues with review for space needs at the Elva Place parking lot. We're working to do some preliminary conceptual plans at this lot, utility assessment and costing prior to the feasibility study being completed, and then it will be presented to council. I continue to meet with the public market board on long-term location ideas to keep them in the downtown, which they'd like to stay in our downtown. They have submitted an application to operate in the City Center parking lot across from the location they're at now, and it's under review with staff. New news, on March 19, restaurants will be able to open up to 75% capacity, according to the governor changing his executive order. Other news, Community Garden operations are continuing. Sign-up forms are online. You'll see the final resolution for the police reform plan in the agenda tonight. Once it's approved, it'll be sent to Albany in compliance with Executive Order 203. I personally like to thank all of the volunteers of the stakeholder group for their time and energy in getting to know our police department, moving this process forward, and their very thoughtful review of all the items they had to undertake. It was a very large process, and they did a great job. There's still continuing conversations between the police chief, the assistant chief, and a group of stakeholders that wanted to continue to meet. So those are ongoing, as dictated and part of the plan. The Jackson Square DRI project is still working through design and feedback. Prior to engineering work, the next look at civil and electrical needs at the square to affect the project we had submitted in the DRI on behalf of the city, which would include enhancing that space for the current activities that are done in conjunction with the bid, bringing concerts in, and then maybe drawing other groups and audiences to use it like a public space in our city. I think it's a great space, and I hope that the enhancements will help to utilize it more. The bid remains a stakeholder in all of the meetings. And lastly, the Senate passed the $1.9 trillion COVID-19 relief bill. There currently is between $1.58 and $1.57 million to the City of Batavia in this relief bill. However, the rules and regulations will be promulgated on how this is used. The initial blush is that it needs to be used on infrastructure, water, wastewater, broadband. So we cannot make any decisions on projects until it goes back to the House, passes there, gets signature, and we understand all the different rules and regulations associated with these funds. One thing we should all be watching for is New York State supplanting these funds. Instead of us getting our AIM aid, they would say, "No, you've got this money." So that's one thing NICOM is fighting, to make sure that New York State doesn't supplant these funds and that they do come in as extra funds to the city. And a reminder that this is a windfall revenue. It's one-time use and should not be used on operations for the city. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Committee reports?
Very short, just so that you all know, the bid is still doing something. They are still working on Wi-Fi. They are still working on Jefferson Square. What's... A turn again, that's what's called glacial speed because of COVID. It's going very slowly, but they are still working on it.
Okay, anyone else? Public comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium at the end of the room there. When you get up there, you can take your mask off and be comfortable, and then please put it back on when you walk back to your chair. State your name and address before your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, that means you have 30 seconds left. Please wrap it up, because on the second bell, I'm going to have to stop.
Bob Briggs?
My name is Bob Briggs, 8922 Fargo Road, Stafford, New York. On behalf of the Friends of the Rink Organization, I come to you tonight to encourage council members to vote yes for the proposed two-year ice rink operating lease between Furman Management and the City of Batavia. Under the current lease, Furman had the option to extend the lease for another five years. Due to extenuating circumstances caused mainly by the COVID-19 pandemic and the fact that the rink was closed from March 17 to the last week of September of the last year, both parties agreed to a two-year lease. A new section was also added for the first time that dealt with the sale of the facility in the event that the city sells the facility or transfers ownership of the facility. While this lease is not perfect, it does give requested consideration to Furman for delayed payment to someone who has operated the ice rink for the last 14 years. For the last two years. And it will allow the rink to be operated for another two years instead of sitting vacant. City Council recently approved a new lease for Joyer Stadium that was agreeable to both parties. Why wouldn't you do the same for the Batavia Ice Arena? I think the proposed lease serves both Furman's interest and the interests of the City of Batavia. The Batavia Ice Arena is a productive community asset. According to the 2018 Creek Park Feasibility Study, the estimated annual use hours are 1,600 hours. Estimated annual attendance is 68,500 persons. An estimated annual economic output is $2.3 million. And I think this is a good return on investment number. Some people think the ice rink is used only by the elite. These elite people are your neighbors, coworkers, and friends, and are found in every ward of the city and almost every village in the county. Many people also believe that GaHa youth hockey is the only user of the ice rink. This is not true. The Batavia Men's Ice Hockey Link, both high schools, public open skate, figure skating lessons, and pickup hockey all pay the youth the ice at the rink. GaHa currently pays $200 for a 50-minute session. That's $4 a minute. In closing, I would like to thank City Council for appointing Rachel Tavouski to the city manager position. I have met with Rachel on two occasions to implement a program for our Friends of the Rink Organization, which would allow volunteers to identify and complete rink improvement projects at no cost or low cost to the city. I found her to be an approachable professional who is very knowledgeable and passionate about her position. She is also very aware of the resident taxpayers who pay the bills. My only question would be, what took you so long? Thank you.
That's all.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to add something, and I had a phone call tonight. And I assured the person because of the call.
Go ahead.
Heidi, I had a phone call this evening at approximately 5:45 from Mr. Vince Chalano, 7 Garfield. And this call was in reference to an ongoing code issue. He was very distraught and very upset, rightfully so. And I assured him that the city would be looking into it. I took a few pictures. I ran over there on the way to the meeting. I showed them to Mr. Tor. Mr. Tor said he will get on this tomorrow. Without getting into a lot of specifics, two years ago, I went over there on several occasions. It's three times worse now than it was two years ago. Two years ago, there was...
What was the problem?
It's a neighboring problem. Neighborhood problems.
Oh, junkets.
Just the front lawn, back lawn, side lawn. One driveway, there's a lot of mud being washed into the streets of the driveways and the proper surface. And, you know, I doubt he could even sell his house. And his home's absolutely right off the cover of a magazine. So Mr. Tor assured me that they'd be getting on it, and everyone here is aware. And of course, with our system in the course, it's a difficult situation.
Here, everything's out.
Thank you.
I was wondering, Mr. Briggs said there's 68,000 people that went to the rink. Is that thing you're correct?
There's no one there with a counter, but there are a lot of things going on. I would give it pretty close to it being that.
Well, is there a fee when they come into the rink?
There's no fee.
There's no fee?
To watch your kid play hockey, unless it's high school. But then the parents would have to pass. So if you want to watch a high school game, you have to pay a couple bucks to get in.
Unless you're a parent.
Unless you're a parent. To watch the young kids, you're not going to pay. But there's vending machines, and there was...
No, I'm just wondering, you know, if there was a fee.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Any unfinished business? I don't know if this is unfinished business or not, but I'm still getting calls about the streetlights. The one on South Jackson is been off, according to the complainant, for over almost a year now.
We have had progress. We did get a report that there were, I think around a dozen lights that were fixed by National Grid, so I know they're getting out on them. So we'll put that out there again on the South Jackson lights.
Yeah, Mr. Sarvis, Henry Sarvis, on South Jackson. He's right. The light's been out for quite a while.
Is that Ann Murray's brother-in-law?
No, brother-in-law. But he's absolutely correct. His house is near where the old bridge would have been, the Jackson Bridge, where that hill starts to go up. And right there on the bed, there's only one streetlight. So that whole curved area and the area under the bridge is totally dark. So that kind of bodes for trouble to gather there and under the bridge and various things. So if we can get that one some special attention, because it creates a very long, dark area in there, right along the railroad tracks there. So it's kind of important. Okay? So thank you. And I told him that we were doing our best and that the company, National Grid, was doing their best to get out there. But this one has been a long time. It's not been fixed. I told him I would mention it one more time. Anything else before we get into the numerous resolutions? Okay? Resolution 10, 2021, Mr. Beely, please?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to adopt the 2021-22 budget ordinance.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Perez?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Resolution 11, 2021, Ms. Briggs, please?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to adopt local law number 1 of 2021 entitled "A Local Law Amending Section 184-41 A, B, C, and O" of the Batavia Municipal Code to establish new water rates, meter fees, and a capital improvement fee.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Perez?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 12, 2021, Mr. Byakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to adopt local law number 2 of the year 2021 entitled "Amending the Business Improvement District Plan."
Second in line, Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Resolution 13, 2021, Mr. McGinnis, please?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the City Council President to execute a youth services agreement with the Genesee County YMCA.
Second in line, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Resolution 14, 2021, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution adopting the City of Batavia Strategic Plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Resolution 15, 2021, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to establish and update current capital projects and transfer funds for capital and project budgets.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian? Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution 16, 2021, Mr. Karaz, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of an investment policy for the city of Batavia, New York.
Second in line, Mr. Byakowski. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Resolution 17, 2021, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of a purchase manual for the city of Batavia, New York.
Second in line, Mr. Karaz. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Resolution 18, 2021, Ms. Briggs?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring $4,450 to the Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund.
Second in line, Ms. Pacino. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian? Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 19, 2021, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring from the employees' benefit accrued liability reserve and to amend the budget.
Second in line, Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian? Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution 20, 2021, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various cities, committees, and boards.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 21, 2021, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to close out the capital projects.
Second in line, Mr. Karaz. Any questions or concerns? Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution 22, 2021, Mr. Karaz, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to terminate the Youth Bureau operating agreement with Genesee County.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Resolution 23, 2021, Mr. Beely.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the extension of the ice rink lease agreement with Furman Management LLC.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Ms. Christian?
I'd like to make an amendment to have this lease for one year and then have a discussion on it during the year to see if we could privatize it. I feel that the city does not belong in business like that.
Do we have a second on that?
I don't know.
Well, we have to, I'm asking if anybody wants to second it. Otherwise, it dies here if it doesn't get a second. Okay, so the motion has not been seconded, so that doesn't carry. Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. President, I understand what Council President Christian's trying to do, but if we have a one-year lease, I'd be risking not being paid the money we're supposed to get paid the second year. So we would really come up short on that. So, you know, I think this is the best we can do, and we have to support it, and that's it.
The ice rink is an important part of the city. We have to have it for our kids, for the high school, for different things that go on there, so...
I totally agree.
I've been in there, looking around, and Furman is doing a lot better job than they have in the past. And with people like Mr. Gray helping out and volunteering, it's, good things are coming, so...
Well, I think too, ice rinks are, they don't make any money. There's no ice rinks making money. The only way you can make money with an ice rink is to get multiple very wealthy sponsors that want to sponsor it. But we have to do the best we can, and we have to maximize sources of revenue. That's why I brought up at the last meeting the naming rights. You know, and I don't think $500 should put your name up there for five years. It's like given anyways.
You'll make money if you have more than one sheet.
Yeah, that's the...
And it's expensive to get another sheet, so...
Yeah.
There's only so much for kids to do during the winter time when the weather's bad enough. And my kids played there, and we were always very grateful for that rink. So I'm a strong supporter of keeping it as long as we can.
Absolutely.
So, anyone else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Resolution 24, 2021, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution awarding purchasing contracts for chemicals.
Second in line, Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino? McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Resolution 25, 2021, Mr. Karaz, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with NFP &amp; Sons Incorporated for the replacement of lead service lines.
Second in line, Ms. Christian. Any questions or concerns?
I have a question. Where are they located? What is their corporate address? North Tunnel 1 in Hanoi. Pardon me? North Tunnel 1 in Hanoi. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino? McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Resolution 26, 2021, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution adopting the City of Batavia's Police Reform Plan under Executive Order Number 203.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis. I have one question. Did we put it out for feedback and comments?